All right, we good to start?
Just a few more moments, please. It's still working.
Okay.
Okay, we are live and I believe interpretation is working. One more thing. Okay, you should be ready to go.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call us to order for our board retreat. We'll start by reviewing the agenda. Tonight, we'll be looking at, we'll be hearing from OSBA facilitator Steve Kelly. We'll be reviewing our board goals for the 2021-22 school year and discussing those. We will talk about board conflict resolution and unity moving forward, and at that point, we'll adjourn. All right, Steve, you're right.
I am. Thank you very much. Welcome and thank you for having me this evening. Let me share my screen if I can. Oh, sorry, you've disabled my screen sharing. I don't know if somebody can.
One second, honey.
All right, thank you.
Right, how's that?
Let me try that again, and there we go. All right, of course, that messed up all my settings. One second. So you should see my screen. It should say Newburgh School Board.
Yes, we do, Steve.
Thanks. And so my task tonight, where'd you go? I got like multiple screens going on. Here we go. My task tonight was to, according to conversations with your board chair, was to present what OSBA can do for Newburgh School Board, answer any questions that you may have about school board work, and to make a short presentation around some of the research and what we call collaborative governance. And so with your permission, I really would like to start with some introductions, get to know you a little bit better. So I'd like to hear from each one of the board members. Just introduce yourself, your name, how long you've served on the school board. I always like to know what your day job is, because now I know what most of your nights are going to be filled with, the type of work that you do. But most importantly, I'd like to hear about what motivates you to do this work. Why did you run for the board? Why are you, you know, I know it's not the pay, because that's next to nothing. But what motivates you to do the work that you do? So Brian, you're top of my screen. Can we start with you?
Absolutely. My name is Brian Shannon. I was elected in 2019. I am a project manager and, you know, trying to improve our education system to deliver for our kids.
Thank you, sir. Renee, Renee, are you with us? Oh, there you are.
Yep. Hi, I'm Renee Powell, and I'm newly elected board member. I'm an artist and a design consultant, and I love kids and I I'm serving to bring them a better education and, yeah, for Haiti and for their future.
Thank you very much. Randy, you're next on my screen. You want to go next?
I am Brady Penner. I have been on the board for four years. My day job is a little bit of Jack of all trades. I am a community volunteer, a student, and currently also working in HR. And what motivates me to do this work is to continue to grow and evolve the education that we have here in our community.
Thank you very much. And while technically not a member of the board, I always like for the superintendent to join in the introduction as part of the leadership team. Joe, you want to introduce yourself next?
Sure. My name's Joe Morlock. I have not served on the Newburgh School Board. This is my, beginning of my fourth year as superintendent, so my day job is superintendent. And the motivation to do this work is I really can't imagine doing any other work. So it's really a joy and an honor for me to be in classrooms and working with students and teachers and staff, so.
Thank you, Joe. Rebecca?
Hi, I'm Rebecca Pyros. I was appointed on the board in 2018 and then elected in 2019. I was, I'm retired, but I was a high school secretary here in the district and union officer here in the district. And my three kids went through Newburgh High School, Newburgh School District. And this is one way I can still serve my community and my, the staff and the students. And I also serve on the OSBA Legislative Policy Committee, as well as the WESD Budget Committee.
Wow, thank you very much. Busy person. I heard the part retired there. I aspire to be you one day. I get later in my career and I'm like, oh, okay, maybe I will retire. And more about me, I'll introduce myself in just a moment, but thank you, Rebecca. And I'm not sure I'm going to pronounce this right, but it's, is it, Inez? No, it can't be Inez.
It's Inez. My name is Inez Pena. I use she/her, ella pronouns. I've been in, serving on the school board since January of 2019. My day job consists of being, working for a nonprofit, you know, creating a space for emerging leaders. And what motivates me to do this work, it's the students. Knowing that I was a student from this district, and I consider myself a success story, and I want that for the kids in our district, so.
Thank you very much. This is a part that I really love about my work is I go around the state and I listen to these introductions. I always listen for those connections to the school district that you serve, either by having kids in the community or having been in the community for a long time, or like you just stated, in terms of being a product of this particular school district. And thank you very much for sharing that. Derek, I think you're next.
Thanks, Steve. My name's Derek Brown. I'm not a member of the board. I'm the assistant superintendent here with the district. And I'm motivated to do this work, because I love working with our teachers, with our staff, with our students and families to try to create the greatest, most high-quality learning experiences we can for all kids.
Thank you very much, Derek. I looked at my sheet next to me and I saw Dee Brown and mistaken the cue for Dave, who's going to be next. Sorry about that.
I was ready if you called on me.
Dave, you're next. Introduce yourself.
Name is Dave Brown. Been on the board for two years. Retired from Newburgh High School a couple of years ago after 20 years working there. And still very active, full-time coaching, not Newburgh anymore, could have been on the board. I think what motivates me is just after all the years of being in the hallways and on the buses and working with kids, just to get in there and help it to be a a little better system than we've had. It's a tough job to run schools. Dr. Joe and I have talked about this a lot, and it's a lot going on and just bringing a different perspective to how we can do that to the board. So thank you very much for coming.
Oh, and thanks for having me. And I think last but not least, if I've got my checklist, Trevor, would you introduce yourself?
Yeah, thanks, Steve. So I'm newly elected. I guess I've been on the board for a couple of months now. So born and raised in Newburgh. I've got four children, two are in the school district right now, one in middle school and one in high school. And I retired from the military about four years ago and just kind of felt called to volunteer, and this seemed like a good place for it.
Thank you very much. You know, the common theme that I heard throughout the group centered around service, students, your community. And so I know you bring different perspectives to the board table, and I think that can be a strength. But I see a common thread when it comes to service for students. A little bit about myself, and then I'll move us on. This is, I'm Steve Kelly. I'm the director of board development and executive searches for the Oregon School Board Association. I'm starting my seventh year at OSBA. In a previous life, I was a superintendent for six years at the South Umpqua School District. I was an assistant superintendent for a time in Lebanon. I've been a charter school principal. I've really done just about every job in education, given the 38, 39, I quit counting a couple of years ago, career. And it really enjoyed every minute of it. And I used to say when I started at OSBA that I missed being a superintendent. And I really do miss that work. But I haven't said that as much in the past year, year and a half. I mean, what Joe and company and all of you have had to deal with is just incredibly unique and challenging. And again, my heart support goes out to you in any way possible. And so thanks for having me here tonight. That's a little bit about me. I'm going to share a couple of other stories a little later in the presentation. But I'm going to move us on. I know you've got a lot to do tonight. And the first thing I want to do is something of a disclaimer. Set the stage, if you will, for some of the comments that I'm going to make later on. I don't want to ignore the elephant in the room. I know as a board, you've made the headlines a time or two in the past few weeks, few months. And my role here tonight is really not about that. And anything that I might say that might seem like I'm talking about you specifically, and maybe some of the challenges that you're going through, that's not my intent. This is the same presentation. You're going to hear some of the same things that I say across to many, if not all, the boards that I work with. Especially when I talk about the research and I talk about effective versus ineffective boards and so on. So again, there's no hidden messages here. There's no hidden jabs. If you think there are, you can certainly call me out on it. But that's not my intention tonight. So please don't read between the lines. I, what you see is what you get from me tonight. And so with that, I'm going to push this on before I make a short presentation. Really, Dave asked me tonight to make sure that I came here really to answer questions. And so I really want to start with any questions that you might have of either the type of services that OSBA provides or board work in general. What are maybe some of the burning questions again that you might have? And I'll ask several times throughout the presentation tonight, but I really wanted to start off with any guiding questions that you might have for our, for our conversation tonight.
Yeah, Steve, I had a question for you.
Okay.
You know, as to me, it's wore a lot of hats, you know, like Dr. Joe seems to have had to. When you look at, you know, not, not just our unique situation, but just board work in general. What what would be your, your recommendation to each of us about how to be the best board we can be? I know that sounds kind of like a big statement, but you know, what's something you could, you know, kind of a motivational little thing, maybe a little Holtz thing going on there? You know, what could you tell us to, that would help us to be, you know, stronger, you know, as a group, even though when we maybe struggle together individually?
That's a great question, Dave, and that's probably the entire presentation that I'm going to give in just a few moments. But let me try to answer your question directly from, from my experience. I've experienced very difficult, if not dysfunctional, boards in my educational experience. I've seen good collaborative, high-functioning boards. As you're going to hear in a few minutes, I've been trained in a lot of the research in the Lighthouse. For me, the greatest impact on kids is when boards can come to the table, represent really different perspectives, but somehow mold that into one will of the board in partnership with each other, but also your superintendent. That is the, to me, the big link between the board work and the influence that you have on student achievement. And again, I'm going to talk more about this in a few minutes. But that relationship with your superintendent takes a lot of work. It takes time. You're going to hear in a few minutes about kind of the research that supports this. And I would say, whenever possible, talk about how you're going to do the work before you get into really meaty conversations. Agree to some ground rules, if you will, for lack of a better term, how you're going to work together. Because in a moment, when you see the definition of collaborative, collaborative governance, it talks about an environment of trust and respect. And when I've seen, not only my experience, but other successful superintendent board combinations, there's high level of trust and respect. When it's not there, they're much less effective. And essentially, and you're going to see in a few minutes, school boards matter. What you do matters, and you're going to have an impact on kids. It's either going to be negative or positive, never neutral. And so succinctly, to answer your question, it really is about paying great attention to building that relationship among each other and with your superintendent. And you're going to hear more about your community partnership as well, but I'll leave it at that for a moment. Other questions or follow-up question, Dave?
No, I think, no, that was a really good answer. I appreciate that. I was just, I was just like, you know, the statement's okay to disagree. And then how do we, how do we, you know, maybe leave the emotion out of it and get to that point where we're, we're solidly discussing the subject matter, kids, you know, whatever, and moving forward. That's kind of my, my goal tonight.
And, and that's hard, right? I mean, this is hard work. That's why I was, I don't know, teasing you about the salary for this job, because it really is hard, challenging work. And it's hard to check your passion or your emotion at the door. You bring it with you. It's what motivates you. But we also don't want it to get in the way of good conversation. And that's what I'm hearing you say is, so how do we do this? Stay passionate at the same time, hear what other people are saying as well. That's difficult. It takes training. It takes conscious thought and effort. It's hard work. But here's the thing that makes school board work unique. You're much more than a collection of seven individuals, eight counting your superintendent, because I consider that to be the leadership team. But for a board of seven, it's much more than just your individual collection. It really is creating the will of the board and then being able to support the will of the board, even when you vehemently maybe oppose to the will of the board. That's tough. That's tough work.
And we are going to talk more about that, right? Because I am struggling myself to go with the will of the board when the will of the board, I feel, is personally attacking my existence in a way.
Understand. I, I, I do understand that. And I do know that's on your agenda later on. Again, my involvement this, this evening is really this, this first part. And so I don't want to step on the toes of whoever's facilitating that message for you or that conversation for you. There are limits to what the will of the board can and should do. Obviously, you've got to stay within any legal or policy or whatever parameters that are set for the board. If the will of the board goes outside of those, yes, it's tough to then support the will of the board. I guess when I talk about the will of the board, it's with the understanding or the assumption that we're in bounds, so to speak. But I can certainly understand your statement about feeling personally attacked in maybe some of the, the conversations or decisions of the board. And that's tough to support. And that's why I say, and I encourage, talking about the processes of how you're going to work together, how you're going to have those conversations. Dave, if I can ask, or maybe other members of the board, is there a board operating agreement in place? Have you talked about kind of the processes of working together?
We do have a board superintendent operating agreement.
Okay. And is, is that specifically just to the board and the superintendent? Is there a portion of it that talks about the board interaction? Because some do and some don't. That's the only reason I'm asking.
Yeah, SARS does.
Okay. And so having that in place and making sure that you follow that. Now, with some new board members, is that something that has been reviewed, even potentially modified, given that you have something of a new group perhaps together?
Not yet.
Okay. And you'll see that. That's one of my recommendations later on in my presentation is looking at that operating agreement, agreeing to it, and then be able to use those as tools to have constructive conversation. All right, any other questions, any other burning questions? Some of this we're going to get to in a few minutes. But I really want to spend this first little bit addressing, like I said, your questions, your challenges.
Before we move off of that, may I ask what we should do when, when members are not properly following the board superintendent working agreement?
There's usually a three-step process that we coach at OSBA. One is usually the board chair, unless it's the board chair, and then it becomes the, the task of the vice chair. Has a one-on-one conversation with that individual and talks about their perception of how they're not following the operating agreement, the importance of the agreement. So basically having that one-on-one conversation outside the boardroom, trying to understand where that person's coming from and why they're not following the, the agreement. But at the same time, focusing on, this is an agreement. Whether you voted for it or not, once it's voted on by the board, it becomes almost the same as policy. And so it is to be followed. So it starts with that one-on-one conversation. And depending on what it is, that might happen once or twice, but then you might take it to the next level. And so step two is to have that conversation in a board meeting. You would then address that individual with the rest of the board there. Now, unfortunately, it has to be in a public meeting. It can't happen in executive session. But then the board chair or the vice chair, whoever's in charge of that initial conversation, then has the rest of the board there as either support or encouragement. Yes, this is important. We want to follow the rules that we've set for each other. And so it becomes a group conversation. The third level would be, again, depending on the violation, if you will, could rise to the level of censorship. That being basically a very public reprimand of, of that individual. And before you ever went through step three, I would say make sure you work with either your school board attorney or one of the OSBA attorneys before taking that step. But if they're really walking out of bounds, not walking with the rest of the group, sometimes the rest of the board has to take a very public stand and say, no, this is important. You have to follow the rules. Good question.
Thank you.
All right, other thoughts, questions? All right, I've got several places throughout. I'm going to ask for questions again. But what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about what it takes to be an effective school board. Because every board, no matter where you're at on this continuum, from effective to ineffective and any place in between, can always improve, always have a bigger, more positive impact on student achievement. But I want to talk, I want to start first with just a little bit of a history lesson. And I promised Dave when we talked, and I should say this to the entire group, I'm going to speed at a very high level tonight. I'm only going to introduce a small portion of what I think your work should be. In the end, you're going to hear me make a recommendation about more in-depth study of what you're going to see in terms of effective, the research on effective school boards. So I'm just going to kind of whet your appetite tonight. Throw out a couple of examples, move pretty quickly through this. And then hopefully in the end, when we talk about those recommendations, we'll talk about next steps. Because the work I'm talking about is ongoing work for a school board. It's not something that you're going to solve in 60 to 90 minutes in my time slot here. It's really a commitment to ongoing work, ongoing conversation, having those difficult conversations when you need to, but having them in the right way. And you'll find that that will positively impact student achievement. So first, a little bit of a history lesson, which kind of sets up this need for the school board research. Because for decades now, there's been this question of, do school boards really, does their work matter? Do you have an impact? Is this an obsolete governance model? And it's really been a conversation for decades. It was really the strongest in the 80s and late 90s. I picked this quote, this was an article in The Atlantic in 2008, when it talked about, again, the subject of fixing school boards. And of course, their solution was, you know, pretty drastic. It was just get rid of all of them. That's how you fix it. And there's that sentiment out there even today. I mean, this is 2008. It's 13 years ago. Here's a more recent quote in Texas. I don't believe this House bill passed, but at the time, they were trying to establish a mechanism by which, if a school district, and in Texas, they grade their school districts on an A, B, C, D kind of rating scale. And so here, they were trying to give the community the tool, if you will. If, if your school district is going backwards, you can basically fire the board, if you will. You don't have to wait till the next election. But on the other end of the continuum, and here's where I have a tendency to lie, especially because I work for a school board association, right? I have a tendency, and I know in my experience, which I'll share in a few minutes, is really just the opposite. I think good school board governance is, this quote really hit home for me. And I'm going to read this. I don't normally read my slides, but I don't know the audience and what instruments they're on. But it says, as we have said before, local school boards are the crucible of democracy. Local school elections in America provide the closest example of democracy for the American people. And this was a couple of professors out of the University of California in Texas A&amp;M. So I throw these quotes up there to say, it's been an ongoing conversation for years. And so it ultimately comes down to, do you have an impact on student achievement? Now, in the late 80s and 90s, there was zero research on school board governance. There wasn't any to be found. And so the first of its kind was what they call the Lighthouse Studies. Now, it says 2009 to 2013 here. That was really phase three. Phase one and phase two happened in the late 90s and the early 2000s. And this was groundbreaking research on, on the question of whether school board matters. Do you impact student achievement? A quick story from my history. When I was superintendent, gosh, I guess it's been 13, 14 years ago now. The Lighthouse research was just emerging. And we were one of the first of three school districts in the state to receive this training. And it was very intense at the time. It's two years, 72 hours of professional development, three hours every month for 24 months. And OSBA provided that training. But I was a brand-new superintendent with a relatively new board. And in short, what I can tell you is it fundamentally changed the culture of that school district and how I as a leader changed because of it. And how I as a leader changed because of it. This is my first time as a superintendent. I came from a very dysfunctional situation in a previous job. And so this was exactly what we needed at the right time. And yes, we had a positive impact on student achievement. So I come at this not only as a practitioner from OSBA, but also as one that has been in the trenches in the school district and saw the changes to the culture of that school district. It was a good school district before I got there. It wasn't like we were in the dumps. But we vastly improved some of the things that we did. And in the Lighthouse Research, they emphasized on the belief and value system of the board as the context for all the work. We know the research is clear. Teachers have an impact on kids. It's probably the greatest impact on kids, but they can't do it alone. And they need good building administration and you need good district leadership and that begins with the board. And so here in the Lighthouse Research, they found that high achieving districts, those boards behave differently than those of low functioning school districts. And this was groundbreaking at the time because this research had never emerged before. And one of the things that came out of that research was basically having high beliefs around student achievement. You've heard the expression all means all for all students can and will learn at high levels. It's not we're going to provide some opportunities and we hope kids take advantage of them and oh, some of those poor kids, they don't have all the, you know, supports at home or here or there, and so they can't achieve at high levels. All that gets is thrown out the window. The expectation is all kids can and will learn at high levels. Now, each each child may have different challenges and we're there to help them with those challenges, but it was all around and began with the belief system and starts with the school board and superintendent leadership. The next bit of research was uh Glass, two thousand seven, two thousand nine. He looked at kind of the turnover of the board, the turnover of the superintendent. When that happens on a regular basis, then you have a negative impact on student achievement. Dr. Tom Alsberry in two thousand three, two thousand eight essentially found the same thing. Now you're going to hear more about Dr. Alsberry in a moment because he's partnering with OSBA and I'll talk about that in just a moment. But when you have turnover on your board or conflict on your board and you start to have superintendent turnover, administrative turnover, that's going to lead to a a decline in student achievement. So to the question, do school boards have an impact on student achievement? From the research and now twenty, twenty five years of research, absolutely. The answer is yes. The question is, is it going to be a positive impact? Or is it going to be a negative impact? Cause what you do, more importantly, how you do it is going to have an impact on your school list. And that's why for me, I try to separate the content of the things that you're trying uh, the challenges that you face, the perceptions that you bring to how you do that. Process versus content is very important. Cause if the process doesn't create an environment of trust and respect, if you're not willing to lead and learn together, you're just going to have a negative impact on student achievement. That's it's just, I can't say it any simpler than that, if you will. Um. So let me stop there. That was a short history lesson. There's a lot more that we can do. I just wanted you to to walk away with that. Yes, there is research. Um, it's going to be very clear. You're going to see some things grow out of that research in just a moment and some recommendations. Um, on how to operate, but this is research based. This is not just something that, you know, I sat around a kitchen table one night and dreamed up. Um, there's a lot of research from a lot of different researchers across the nation here. So questions, thoughts, reactions to what you just saw.
Does this have anything to do with how we also bring across equity and diverse inclusion and diversity?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Cause when we talk about all kids and believing all kids can achieve at high levels, you you've got to talk about their challenges, their uniqueness, their um, the equity of pieces that exist both implicitly and explicitly. Uh, systemically and not. I mean, it's one of the things in South Oak Park. We established three priorities. And the first one was you absolutely have to see each child. You've got to connect with each child. Uh, it starts with building that relationship. And so, yes, I do believe that that is interwoven into the work that we do. Good question. Other questions, other thoughts, other reactions?
Steve, do you guys have a a handout on that Lighthouse project, something uh? I've heard of it before, but uh is that something that we can get our hands on?
Abs- absolutely. Uh, any and all of this, um, and great question, Dave, I should have mentioned. I didn't want to flood you with a whole bunch of either handouts or information, but certainly I can provide some brief documents. There's some summaries of the Lighthouse Research. Um, you're going to see some uh extension of Dr. Alsberry's research in just a moment. And the next slide I'm going to show you is about a book that he and Phil Gore wrote. Phil Gore is my counterpart in Texas. He used to work in Washington and now is the director of board development in Texas. Uh, it's a great book as well, and I'll show that. So yes, I can provide some resources. Uh, and hopefully if we choose to do more work together and really dive into this, because like I said, tonight, you're getting the ten thousand foot. You know, executive summary piece of this. Um. So yes, Dave, I'll send you something and you can forward on to the rest of the board. The other piece that I have that my team developed a couple of years ago are position papers on what you're going to hear about in just a moment collaborative governance and uh professional development for school boards. So a good question. Others, questions or reactions?
You mentioned that the impact on student achievement was more about process than the content. Um. The facts are, we have not been following a proper process. So that indicates to me that we are already impacting the student achievement in a negative way. How do we move forward knowing this information?
That that's a great segue. Thank you very much for that because I'm going to share with you some ways to look at processes, develop processes. Um, it's not to say that content doesn't matter. It it does. I know the content is where the different perspectives come in, but we can all agree to a common process. And if you're not, if you don't have those protocols, the processes in place to have meaningful conversations with each other, with your superintendent and with your community, then that's something that that I or my team can help you with. We can help facilitate those conversations. And that's why I asked about the operating agreement. That's a good place to start. But you're right, if if the world and I for you, the world is your school district, your community views you as dysfunctional, then yes, you're already starting to have a negative impact on student achievement. And again, hear me when I say if that's how people view you. I'm not saying that's how I do you. I don't know you well enough to make that judgment. All right, let's let's a- any other pressing questions? Those are really good. Thanks. All right. Um. So here's the book that I referred to. It has lots of different authors. It uh is really a good summary of the research. This is one area that if you really wanted to explore being a a high functioning effective board, I would suggest that we do a book study, not read the entire book, but bits and pieces of it. Um, and Dave, if your board's uh interested in it, I can help you get copies. We can talk about setting that book study up. But in this concept of balanced governance from Dr. Alsberry, he talks about this continuum. Now, I don't want to go into each one of these boxes, but I do want to go across the top and say on one end of the continuum, a board that overreaches, that micromanages, that gets too deep in the details of the school district has a negative impact. And we probably have heard that, know that and and kind of makes sense to us. But here's the other piece that's just as destructive is a board that is what we call disengaged or rubber stamped. Your role falls in the middle. It's a balance. It's what you're going to hear me call collaborative governance in just a moment. How do you collaborate with each other, the superintendent, the community? To have a positive impact on student achievement. Dr. Alsberry calls it informed oversight. But there can be too much and too little. It is more around balanced governance. But let me have you look at this next definition because for me and the work that my team does at OSBA, in twenty five words or less, this is what you're looking for, board. When you look at this statement, does this describe you? Or not? And again, it's a rhetorical question that's, we don't have time tonight to dive into the conversation. I'd love to have an opportunity down the road to take you deep into this conversation. But again, tonight's about an overview.
Steve, could you read the question, the the statement? I'm unable to read it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I've I will. Thank you for reminding me. So collaborative governance. And again, this is based on Alsberry's work of balanced governance, but I like the word collaborate. I think it's more proactive from the board side. Now I can already hear as I do most superintendents. Joe's going, Steve, shut up. What are you doing? You're scaring me here. Don't don't get him too riled up. And but again, it's about balance. It's about respecting your roles and responsibilities, but let me read this definition. And then I'm going to break it down a little bit. But collaborative governance utilizes effective partnerships. I'm going to stop there for just a moment. What do I mean by effective partnerships? The first partnership is with each other. You are not a collection of seven individuals. You are in the strongest sense of the word, a team. A collaborative group. Now that doesn't mean you agree on everything. You're actually stronger when you don't. But there is a sense of partnership among each other. That's one partnership. Second partnership is with your superintendent. Even though you have different roles and responsibilities, you can still be partners. Third is a partnership with your community. Now we could take each one of those partnerships and spend three hour workshop on just that alone. But when you think about this team relatively new coming together after the elections, in your mind, how do you react? How do you feel when I say partnership? Do you feel in partnership with the rest of your board? Do you feel in partnership as a board with the superintendent? And if the answer is no, we've got a lot of room to go there, then we've got some room for growth, but let's continue with the definition. So what does these partnerships do? You learn and lead together. You're learning, and this is focused on student achievement. You're going to see in just a moment. You learn and lead together in an environment of trust and respect. So again, you gotta, you gotta stop yourselves and say, am I working in an environment of trust? Respect? If the answer is no, we've got to start there. Are we learning together? Are we leading together? All right, let's continue. With a shared focus on equitable student outcomes. I E. You're focused on kids and their learning. To finish the definition, through collective responsibility, accountability and support. So that's our definition of collaborative governance. I'm going to share in a moment the twelve standards that fall underneath this. But before I do, let me just take a step back and get your reaction to this definition. And again, we created it at OSBA. I've got a position paper that talks about this definition and it's based on the research.
Hey, Steve.
Yes.
That's Trevor. Hey, um, I I like what you have written here. I I got a question. What? What is equitable student outcome mean?
It's the student, it's the, it's the, let's see, what's the right way? I used to call it student learning. Um, but I wanted to be a little bit, I wanted to call out a little bit more of um your student outcomes, what your uh graduate profile looks like, if you will. What's your expectations? Do you have high expectations? So you really get to decide what those equitable student outcomes are. But we've got to to me inside that, it also means we've got to see each child where they are and move them from there. Not treat everybody exactly the same because we're not all the same. So it's really seeing each child. I keep going back to the phrase I used in South Pumquhaw. And moving that child accepting their individual challenges that they come with, because we all come with different baggage, for lack of a better word, or challenges. And moving them. See, I I personally don't see education as a conveyor belt. It's much more complex than that. We can't treat kids like widgets in a widget factory. And so to me, when we talk about equitable student outcomes, it's having high expectations for all kids. But it's also meeting kids where they are and moving them up to those high expectations. And that in itself can be a great conversation for a board superintendent. What do we mean by? Right? Because you've got to have that target. And in a moment, you're going to see that in one of the standards. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. But really good question, Trevor. Thank you. Other questions or reactions to this definition? All right, let me press on. We're going to come back to this. To me, this is cornerstone. This is how you describe the work that you do. All right, so let me um, underneath this is twelve standards. We're, as I said earlier, we're partnering with Dr. Tom Alsberry. He's a professor at the Northwest Christian University in Washington. And from his research, he developed twelve standards. There's actually twelve standards, which apply to the whole board. And then there's ten practices that uh apply to individual board members. And again, I'm just going to briefly describe both. I'm hopeful that you're intrigued enough to follow some of the recommendations that are to come. But very briefly, the twelve standards. And again, I'll read through these because it may be hard to read on your screen. Uh, the first is vision directed planning. We are going to talk about that one a little bit more, but these are all standards that describe board work. So this is kind of the how to of that collaborative governance definition, community engagement, effective leadership, accountability, the using of data for continuous improvement, cultural responsiveness. That's six out of the twelve. There's culture and climate. Being a learning organization, that's that lead and learn piece. Systems thinking, because at the board level, you're really thinking in terms of big systems. You allow your superintendent to think of the small, the details, the day to day kinds of things. There's innovation and creativity. Board member conduct, ethics and relationship with the superintendent. This is called out as a separate standard and then of course budgeting and financial accountability. According to Tom's research, these are the twelve pillars of board work. Now what I'd like to do is just take two or three explored a little bit more. I didn't want to take these for all twelve tonight. Again, I'm just trying to pique your appetite. And I'm hopeful, I'm very hopeful that we're going to do continued work here. Because if we can have conversations and and help you develop practices around these standards, you're going to be a more effective school. All right. So the first one I want to talk about and to me is number one for boards. There's twelve. There's a lot of work to do there, but without this and there's one other standard, I I I think you flail right out of the gate. And that's vision directed planning. So let me read these two statements again. The board engages the community and staff in the development of a shared vision that's focused on student learning. So again, rhetorical question, but I want to ask yourself, do we have that in place right now? If so, does it need to be revisited? Do we need to have recommitment? Again, you've got a relatively new board. Where are we at in this work? And you may say, yes, Steve, we got it. Gangbusters. We're good here. Let me go on the second bullet. The board ensures that the vision is the foundation of the mission and strategic goals that direct board policymaking, planning, resource allocation activities. In other words, does it drive all the work that you do as a board? So not only do you have it and it's collaborative. And it's collaborative. And you've got a lot of buy in, you use it. Because sometimes I see visions that sit on the shelves. So this is one standard that we could dive deeper into. And these 12 standards, as you're going to see in just a moment, are a part of a new tool at OSBA. A new board self assessment survey. So I'm hopeful that sometime in the future, you'll elect to take that survey, look at the results, have somebody from my team or myself help you. Facilitate that conversation around those standards. Because out of that self assessment tool, then we can take a glimpse into where are you strong? And where are you not as strong as a board in relationship to these 12 standards? So we have a tool to diagnose. So let me look at another standard very quickly, just to give you a flavor of some of these standards. Here's another one around accountability. I see some boards that do a great job with the direction, the strategic direction, I like to say. Boards should set the strategic direction. They own that. But the superintendent really owns the strategic plan, which is all the details underneath that strategic direction. That's where you partner, but your roles and your responsibilities are different. But there's a very meaningful and engaging way for boards to hold the system accountable. And it's described here a bit in the accountability standard. So the first bullet says the board holds high expectations for the learning of each and every student. And holds themselves and the district accountable for reaching those results. The board provides strategic direction. We've talked about that. The board adopts policy and resources that align, and then the board monitors. Monitors and holds the superintendent accountable to the district's strategic vision and goals. So there's. A lot of work that can be done there. It's meaningful. It's this. This was the piece in South Pumquhaw that turned the corner for us. When my board worked alongside myself and my key staff, building administrators, teacher leaders. And three or four times a year, we're looking at student data. We're talking about challenges. We're collaborating. I had teachers say to me, Steve. One, I never knew the names of my board members. And two, I didn't know they cared so much about student achievement. And the fact that the board members sat down and talked with them about it. Held them accountable. And then I had board members that said the same thing. So it's a very powerful dynamic. That can happen in a school district. So let me press on and then I'll ask for questions. I got just a couple more. I want to just illustrate. This one talks about culture and climate. This is the context for the work. This is where the board can make the greatest impact. The board creates a climate of expectation that, again, all students can learn at their highest level. This comes straight out of the Lighthouse Research. Talks about the board supports policy and procedures that foster a positive and safe learning environment. And so on, around mutual respect and service. So this is the the culture. At the board level, at the district office, throughout the buildings, throughout the school district. And then last but not least. And I I find this to be probably the second, a very close second to the vision planning. The strategic direction standard that I started off with. And that's the board member conduct, ethics and relationship with the superintendent. This comes back to what we started out with in terms of how you worked together. Individually uh on a board and board with the superintendent. So again, just a glimpse in inside three or four of the 12 standards. Again, I want to stop long enough to take a drink and see if there's any questions, any reactions? Thoughts?
Steve, I had a question around the accountability piece. You know, as a board, we are pretty limited in terms of the information we're getting about how our schools are actually running. Day to day. Do you have any? Advice or suggestions about how we can do a better job of collecting information about where our students at? You know, I believe they just uh ended some of the state assessments that we're doing for students in the name of equity. So it seems like we're actually taking tools away from school boards in Oregon to figure out how students are doing. And so if you could speak to that point for me.
I can, and that really starts with. Um, a collaborative conversation with your superintendent and some of his key staff. Because first, what I want to say is what is your strategic direction? What are the big overarching areas of focus that the board has set? Because if you if you haven't, or if you don't have those, we've got to start there. And then as a board, we're going to talk about. What kind of data do you want to see? Not for the day to day operations. What I call strategic planning. But what are your strategic? Direction, I call them priorities. And what kind of data do you want to see? And you do that collaboratively with your superintendent and your key staff. Once that's established. Then we create what we call a monitoring plan. And so we set up the expectations for you to see that data, but more than just see it. Interact with it, have conversations with key staff to know that you're either on track or not, or what the challenges are. Or more importantly, my board used to ask my staff. Where do you need help? What can we do? What things are getting in your way that we have control over? Sometimes it's policy, sometimes it's financial. Um, that's one way, and that's what I mean when I talk about a monitoring plan for the board. That's on the strategic direction side. Now, the other side of that coin is the strategic plan. The superintendent and his team create a strategic plan, which has very specific goals, strategies of. Um, and so forth, and measures of 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 effectiveness. And that belongs to the superintendent. But that gets shared with the board periodically. And that's more of sharing progress on different parts of the strategic plan. Because the board wants to make sure that the strategic direction. And the strategic plan align. So it's it's really sitting down, having the conversation about setting those expectations, Brian. And again, it's done in a couple of ways. One is very interactive, like I said, at the board level. And another one is more presentational, where you get periodic updates on parts of the strategic plan. So there's systems that we can create. That would uh increase that flow of information, if you will.
So I guess I'll play devil's advocate here, you know.
Okay.
The superintendent is our one employee. You're essentially asking us. And, you know, and and this isn't specific to Joe. This is just the role of the superintendent. He's our one employee. Every employee wants to keep their job. So you're asking us to set up an information flow system with the employee that he essentially gets to control. And then somehow we're supposed to hold him accountable based on that, and that seems fairly naive. Just in terms of a a systems setup.
What I described on one level is controlled by the board. The strategic direction and the data that you receive is set by the board. In collaboration with your superintendent. So that part you control. Because that's your role as a board. On the superintendent's slide side. What they're in control of is the operation. So. I guess I'm misunderstanding your question. You're basically both respecting each other's role and responsibility. And and he's sharing the information as requested. Now, you could certainly. I I I guess I'm missing the point here. Again, I work I work out of a mindset more of. You have a partner in this. Yes, I guess technically he's your employee, sure. But if you don't treat him as a partner. Out of trust and respect. I think you're dead out of the gate.
So I guess I I I guess part of my problem is your answer seems very vague when you just say he would share information. What is the information that a school board is wise to be trying to get from the superintendent?
Well, it's going to depend on your strategic plan. If. Are you privy to your strategic plan? Do you know that you have a strategic plan and what's in it?
Yeah, we have a strategic plan.
Okay. And so there are, in any good strategic plan, measures of evaluation or effectiveness? So you have strategies and the superintendent is measuring the effectiveness of those strategies. Is that correct?
I don't know if I would say that's currently being done.
Okay, there's objectives in the strategic plan. Is there an evaluation component of whether you're meeting those objectives or not?
No, I mean, in our meetings, um. The superintendent will often call out. The things he's doing, how it relates to various items on the strategic plan, but I. And we review his goals, his yearly goals, but I don't think we ever really. Do much of a review on the strategic plan itself. Or at least I haven't seen that.
And so that's that's part of the conversation, Brian, is. To your superintendent. Show us that you're effectively implementing, you know, give us some objective data on your implementation of the strategic plan. And if it's doesn't meet your uh definition of objective information, then you just say, please go back and try again. So there there's a way to have this conversation and the board gets the information that they're looking for. I would just want to be a bit more concrete in looking at your strategic plan with the board and the superintendent and having a conversation. Uh, back and forth. This this is a bit abstract for me to be getting real concrete in terms of my example.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, other questions? Thoughts, reactions? Because I'm getting close to the finish line here. Now, again, I want to emphasize the 12 standards that we went through really quickly is part of this board self assessment survey. And so there is an instrument by which the board members and the superintendent would take this instrument. We'd look at those results. And again, we'd have conversations around your strengths in these areas and these standards. And and areas of growth in others. There's also a part of this instrument that is based on individual board member behavior. It's unique in this way. The instrument we used to have only focused on the whole board. But this can give us good data about individual board member uh work. And so there are what they're called 10 practices. And again, I'm going to spend very little time here. But these are things from an individual board member perspective. And I'm going to illustrate a couple of these in just a moment, but there's things around your boundaries as an individual uh board member and your orientation. Your advocacy focus, your student, what they call student concern focus or solution focus. Is is five out of the 10, according to Dr. Allsberry. There's some others that I'm going to illustrate a couple of these in just a moment. Uh, your use of voice, your use of power, your decision making style. Again, how you come at a particular uh issue. Um. Let me illustrate. Let me do it this way. Let me talk about the first one, your role boundaries. This goes back to an earlier slide where we talked about either being. Too too far on the one side of micromanagement. Too far on the other side in terms of a rubber stamp or a disengaged. You really want to be in the sweet spot in terms of what we called informed oversight. And Brian, this goes back a little bit about the question you asked me um in terms of being informed. What does that mean? We should talk about that in terms of what does that mean for the strategic plan? Because you have some oversight responsibilities, but you need to be informed. And so we can talk about how you get that information. But this is one of the 10, what they what Dr. Allsberry calls the practices of individual board members. The next one talks about. What he calls a use of voice. Um. Do you, when you're, you know, advocating, when you're at the board table? Do you have a tendency to be more what we call tell and sell? Uh, essentially, it's it's your view. It's the only view that you see. You're just out there, you know. Uh, putting it out there, trying to sell it. Or are you more on the other side of that continuum, more of a hear, understand? And again, the sweet spot is more in 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 the middle. Are you able to advocate on one hand, but be able to hear and understand other points of view? And the last one, I want to illustrate this way. It's called the use of power. And what's your mental perception of of the of the word power? In terms of power over and power with? Let me illustrate with this. So again, just to yourselves, and I'll read through these. I want you to pick one of these five statements. Which of the following definitions is closest to your own definition of power? How do you think about the term power? And number one is the power is ability to get others to do what you want or need them to do. Or does power mean more the ability to control others? Or power is the ability to assist in facilitating change with those most affected by the outcome of the change? Or some would define power as freedom and respect? And then last but not least, power is the authority, the right and the approval to make decisions for others. So just five different ways to describe power. Just to your own self, which one do you gravitate towards if I were to ask you to define power? Now, again, this would be much more powerful if we were in a setting and that we'd each discuss. Um, dig deep into this. But again, just to illustrate, this is one of the practices of board members. You'll see that one, two and five, those in red. Show more of a power over mindset, whereas number three and number four is more power with. So again, just very briefly, I tried to illustrate. The practices, the standards. What's involved in board work? And so I want to wrap up with this. I want to make some recommendations and then I'm going to open up for questions um to kind of wrap this piece up. And so my recommendations are are as follows. We've talked about that you do have an operating agreement, but that you may want to kind of pull it out, go over it. So all board members, superintendent, understand what it is, how you're going to operate it, modify it. So that everyone can own it, if you will. It's good to vote on your operating agreement so that it established by the will of the board, this is how you're going to operate. And you can even talk about having a system like I did, kind of three steps. If you're violating your operating agreement, what do you do? What steps do you go through? So that's an that's an important process piece, in my opinion. The second is. I'm hopeful that you'll want to spend. Some more time here talking about these standards, really applying them to your situation and gaining a deeper understanding. Because if you understand. These standards, if you understand or begin to use collaborative governance as a guide. Then. It's going to deepen your meaning on. What? Board work. Means to positively impact student achievement. Because ignoring these or moving away from these is going to have the opposite effect on student achievement. So that's my second recommendation is to dive deeper into this work. You've got about an hour and 15 minutes worth of just overview. Um, I would push you to think deeper about some of these things. Third is to commit to taking our new survey. Look at those results, have a facilitated conversation. Again, it can be myself. It could be a member from my team. But then take those survey results. And my fourth recommendation then is to build your professional development goals, your board goals. On that survey, on that information. And then develop a professional development plan for the board. Because this is ongoing work. You do not learn how to be a board member in an evening. It's ongoing. It's a commitment to ongoing professional development and ongoing conversations. So those are my recommendations to you. Um, before I finish up with my very last slide. I'd welcome your questions, your comments, your thoughts.
Hey, Steve, are you going to provide those, the slides and stuff, or is that a link to the? Material that you presented today?
Of of the of the PowerPoint that I shared?
Yeah, is that on the OSBA side or is that something you can share with us?
Oh, absolutely will. I'll absolutely share it with you. Um. Um, it's something that I created specifically for this. Uh, again, some of this is is new work in our partnership with Tom Allsberry. And I've got some other resources. Again, Trevor, this is something, I think, Dave, you told me that, not tonight perhaps, but. At an upcoming meeting, you're going to talk about what you saw tonight, maybe what you think your next steps would like to be. And I can provide you with additional support material, Trevor, absolutely.
Thank you. Hey, I guess one other question, Steve, I, you know, this is focused on the board and how we perform and what we do and stuff, but I haven't researched this, but I'm just curious. Have you ever researched how the, the knowledge that our kids have when they graduate? How does that compare to 25, 50, 100 years ago? Right? Are, are we doing better or worse? You know, I try to, I try to step back. You can, you can look at the graduation rates and stuff like that, but you, you see what I'm getting at? Are, are we doing better today? Disregarding the technology and stuff like that, right? Are, are the kids, the, the knowledge that they're learning in school, is it at a higher, the same or lower level than 25, 50, 100 years ago?
It's a great question. No, I don't know off the top of my head if there's been any kind of study or research. I, I think the context matters. And so the context of 25, 50 years ago was so much different than it is today. I don't, I don't know if we're able to compare those apples and oranges, if you will. I think related to what you're asking, and I don't know if your school district does, but I know some that do, is, is really look at the impact of their diploma and, and do really extensive follow-ups with their students a year later, three years later, five years later. Because really it's one thing to have whatever the graduation rate is, but did we really prepare kids for the next steps? And although we didn't do it as systematically at South Umpqua as I would have liked, we did start to engage our junior college, the freshmen, sophomore teachers that were inheriting some of our students and starting to have conversations with them that said, hey, how did we prepare kids? You know, kids coming from South Umpqua, how are they doing? So it's something beyond, if you will, the K-12 system in terms of your effectiveness.
Yeah, I like that. Were, were you able to glean anything to take back?
Oh, absolutely. As part of our professional learning communities, my senior teachers would periodically sit with, we had the Umpqua Community College. And so we had quite a few of our kids go there. And so my freshman, I mean, my senior English teachers would talk to their freshman English teachers and my math teachers. And absolutely. Oh, it, it, it changed to some degree, some of the things that we focused on, which then meant that my high school teachers had to talk to my middle school teachers because they needed to be prepared in a different way. And then my middle school teachers had to talk to elementary teachers and you can see the downhill effect there of those conversations. But yes, short answer is yes.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Others, yes, please. Somebody's starting to speak up.
Well, you, you know, you're going to get to go watch Jeopardy or Walker Talks, Walker Texas Ranger here in a minute and get out of here and we're stuck here. So what would you start us off with a couple of good board goals? What would you think would be a couple of good areas to start into on that?
That's a great question, Dave.
Kind of put you on the spot, I know. Just general, doesn't have to be anything too specific.
Well, I guess I, my encouragement is, is right here on my recommendations. I would hope that you would commit at least to one of your board goals into having deeper understanding of what makes an effective school board. I think without doing more study with some of these standards and what they mean, where your strengths, where your weaknesses are as a board, as measured against those standards, I would encourage that as a board goal. And then, once you have a deeper understanding and hopefully once you've taken the assessment, then that exposes where you're strong and not as strong, and you build board goals off that survey. That's one place that a board should build their goals. Now, I, I should check for understanding here because when you say board goals, you're talking about goals specifically for the board, not the school district. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. In some places where I work, they intermingle district goals with board goals. And I see district goals as goals for everyone in the organization. Board goals are a subset of those. And so those are goals for the board. So the second place to glean your board goals is to look at your district goals. And assuming that you, that you have those and you probably do, then how can the board support those goals? And you would create specific goals. So without knowing what those are, those are hard for me to specifically recommend. But that's where you get your goals is from the overall work of the district, district goals and/or your own self-assessment. It's the same place a superintendent gets his goals. It should either come from his previous evaluation. When I was superintendent, my board would evaluate me and then they would want me to make specific goals based on that evaluation result. Or goals that specifically supported the district goals. It's the same for a school board. You need to be assessed. Now you have no real boss. Well, not easy, that's not accurate. Every four years, your boss, you know, passes judgment on you during an election, but that aside, your assessment is this self-assessment. So back to your question, Dave, my application is dig deeper into the work, really understand what an effective school board does and how they operate. That will have the greatest impact on kids.
Okay.
Steve, Steve, would you recommend doing the self, the, the board assessment sooner than later because, because of the new board members that we, we assess where we are now to, to springboard discussion where we need to to work on?
Yes, yes, I would. It's not quite available yet, but it will be in the very near future. What I would encourage is that we spend some time together, go deeper into the standards one by one, so that you have some understanding. Cause if you take the survey and not really understand the standards, it might not give you great results. So I would encourage a work session where we would dive deeper than I did tonight, have more of an engaging conversation around the standards and the practices, and then take the survey. That way you're coming into it, at least with some knowledge of those standards. And then yes, come right back, look at those results and, and have some candid conversations around your strengths and weaknesses as a board.
And would you recommend the September 15th lunch webinar about effective boards?
Yes, I would. That's, that is roles and responsibilities. It's aimed at newer board members. I wouldn't say necessarily brand new, but newer board members and even board members of some experience. And something that's forthcoming is an entire series for my team, a webinar series on collaborative governance. And we explore, what does it mean to be effective partners with one another? That's coming after the 15th. What does it mean to be a partner with your superintendent? What does that look like? How do you do that? And then the third in the webinar series is how do you partner with your community? So we've got a whole webinar series that's going to explore, and this is what I want to finish up with, is back to this com, this definition of collaborative governance. Cause again, all 12 standards support this definition. This is what you're striving for. When you read this statement, does it describe you? And if not, that's what you're striving for. I'm going to leave that on the screen, but I'm going to ask for questions or comments because I'm really wrapping up my portion. I know you've got some other work to do tonight and I want you to get to that. Thoughts, questions, comments?
Yeah, Steve, I'll, I'll follow up with you after the meeting and we'll maybe, you know, I'll get down there and sit down with you and we can go over that future training thing. Sooner the better would be great for us. And I'll come and get in contact with you on that so we can make it happen.
Okay. Well, certainly, you know, feel out the rest of the board. It, I know it's a commitment of time and I know you're very busy. But this will pay dividends. It won't happen in a single year. But over time, I can tell you from experience, because I've lived it, you'll have a positive impact on student achievement if you try to deeply understand the research, the standards, and if you strive for what you see on the screen. If that's your guiding star, no matter what your differences might be, no matter what your content might be, if you can accomplish this, you can have a positive impact on student achievement. If not, if you go in the other direction away from this statement, unfortunately, you're going to have a negative impact on kids. I, I don't know any other way to, to say it. And here's why I'm a little blunt in this arena. When I was a superintendent, I was not looking to move. I wasn't looking to lead, lead the superintendency. I loved being a superintendent. It was challenging work, absolutely. Now, and this was pre-pandemic. I can't even imagine what Joe and company's going through right now, but when OSBA came along and I saw this opportunity to work at the state level, suddenly my 1,500 kids in South Umpqua turned into 580,000. So your kids are my kids. I do take it personal. And I try to work with every single school board in the state because you all have my kids and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. So let's talk about how we can partner together, again, either myself or my team, because we're all committed to the same level. I got the best team in the world. So yes, Dave, please talk with your, your board. Would love to continue the conversation, would love to continue to support you and the board and the superintendent and, and your entire school district. Just let me know how I can make that happen.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Again, I absolutely appreciate the privilege of being here tonight. And again, reach out, contact me. What I'd like for you to all have is my email address, which I'm going to send some follow-up information that you're going to have. I'll put my phone number in there. I want you to feel free to reach out to me at any time. If you have a question around board work, anything, then I want you to be able to either contact me via email or call me on my cell phone. Happy to support in any way I can. So with that, I'm just a few minutes over time. Dave, I think I'll turn it back to you, although Brian, I think you opened the meeting, so I'm not sure who's running the meeting, but I'll turn it back to whoever's in charge, just put it that way.
Yeah. So I think now would probably be a good time for a five-minute break. Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
All right. So we'll meet back here in five minutes at 7:41. All right, folks can start coming back.
Do we have a lot of people in the audience?
I see 95 participants total. I don't know how many of those are just general audience members.
Yeah.
Eighty-two are general audience members and 13 panelists.
Wonderful. Folks, a second to come back here.
Brian, I am here.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. How are you feeling? All right. Like we're just waiting on Trevor. Come back, Trevor. All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Trevor should join us again here shortly. All right. So next up is our discussion around our board goals for 2021, 22. Alright, uh, so next up is our discussion around our board goals for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. So I guess we can just start uh, with a sort of a free-ranging conversation. Jen, could you take notes for us?
Yep.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, one that, one that struck me is um, enhancing accountability. I thought that would be. A good thing to look at our strategic plan and figure out. Areas where we're not properly monitoring uh, the progress on that. Anyone have any thoughts on that?
Well, I would like to um. Um. Take Steve's advice about um, further education on all the standards, so we really. Before we, we implement such a thing that we really understand what it's about.
Are you talking about the survey that he was?
No, he, no, he was saying a, a deeper dive into all twelve standards before we take the survey. That we get further educated on. I mean, it, it's great, it's a great standard to, to, to. Adopt, but I would like to under- have a full, more fully understanding of it. And that's what he was suggesting that um, we, we have a, a, a work session. To go through the twelve standards. And so that before we adopt any of those, or before we. We start implementing any of the standards, we, we actually do a, a, a deeper dive into what, what actually that means.
Okay, I'm not, are you suggesting we not talk about our board goals tonight?
No, I'm suggesting that that's one of, that's, that's our, our board goal that we. Um, commit to further um. Education of the twelve standards for collaborates, collaborative governance. So that, so that we can then adopt, adopt this uh, the standards as, as goals.
Okay, so you're suggesting that that is a board goal?
Yes.
Increase our own education on the standards, okay?
Yes, be- before we adopt, start adopting the standards.
Okay.
A really hard time thinking of board goals because I feel like we're really at a point of. I keep being reminded of like Maslow's hierarchy of needs. There is absolutely no way this board can function at a high level. At this point in time. I mean, there is so much distrust. There's so much illegal potentially actions. There's so much chaos that has been sown. In the last month, that there's just, I mean, we can talk about goals and board goals, that's fine, but let's be honest with ourselves. We're not gonna be able to do. Any of this. In our current situation and in our current environment. And so these could be lofty attempts at something, but. Realistically, our, our level of functioning as a board is so substandard at this point. That we're not gonna be able to do much at this pace.
So do you have a recommendation on how to move forward, Brandy?
Yeah, I do. I recommend that we would meet with Steve and have really open and honest conversations about the lack of trust, the lack of. Uh, communication, let the environment that this. Team is currently in before we, before we attempt to reach any sort of higher level of operating.
Okay, uh, we have board conflict resolution unity moving forward as one of our agenda items, uh, so I would suggest that we save that conversation for. Later this evening.
Who is running that?
I was gonna say, do we have someone facilitating that? Because if it's just us amongst us, we're gonna get nowhere.
Well, with that kinda attitude.
No. This, this is based on evidence from our previous meetings. I'm not going based on my own attitude, like you say, this is just fact. I don't, I don't feel there's trust among us.
I feel it's a fair statement. I think it probably cuts both ways. If we're being perfectly honest. Okay, uh, anyone else have any proposed board goals? That they would like to throw out there?
Yeah, I, I have like just a simple goal. I guess, you know, we could sound uh. You know, all. You know, I do, do wanna meet with Steve and I think that that's a good, you know, good step. It's gotta be a good goal for us. Um. But I think, you know, some, you know, maybe way this board is now trying to simplify. A little bit, you know, when things are going rough, you know, instead of trying to make it really hard. Um, one thing we could do tonight, we could look at each other. And say, or hear each other's words and say. You know, let's stop the bickering and the Facebook worrying and the. The awful things being said out there and let's try to move forward, at least on, on a, a subject like that. So we don't have all the personal attacks coming into place. That would be one simple goal we could set as a board.
Dave, you opened the meet, or you didn't open it, I'm sorry, I apologize. The, the executive session started with the four members. Taking action outside of a legal board meeting. And you wanna talk about trust? You wanna talk about? How we can come as our full authentic selves and really create a strong team? There, you can't say, I wanna have. This great discussion where we can all kumbaya and then in the other totally turn around and do what you guys did tonight. And, and I get that it goes both ways. I, I totally don't doubt that. And I think that's why it's important to delve into that before we can get. Anywhere else. And I think it needs to be facilitated by an outside third party with lots of experience.
I guess what I was saying, Brandy, was like when we have the horrible. Things being inside of newspapers and things like that, then.
Dave, Dave, you.
Why can't we just stop that stuff right now? Why can't we just make that a simple? Just agree tonight to stop that stuff.
But Dave, how, how did this, how did it come up that? Did, did Renee and Trevor and you and Brian know about the, the plan to bring to this lawyer into the meeting? Before the meeting?
Having somebody to represent the board.
But, but did you know about this before the meeting and why didn't you let us all know?
Well, he had to have known because um, the attorney Smith said that. They've reached out, so he had to have known.
And did, and did Trevor and Renee know about this also?
I was the one that wanted to have an attorney because of the attacks. And the harassment that we have been receiving. Um, I have documentation with people's names. On it that have been turned over to the police and they are gonna be investigating. Which are staff members, teachers. And um, other school officials that are involved in this.
But did you, did you know that, that Trev, that Ty Smith was gonna be asked at the meeting to, to, that we were going to have a vote to? To um, ask him to be, be our, our representative?
I wanted, I wanted to have somebody to represent.
So, so you, so you knew about it? Did Trevor know about it?
I, I knew that Ty Smith was uh, going to sit down on the meeting tonight.
Well, well.
Well, I didn't know that for sure. I, because it sounded like he wasn't gonna be allowed to, to be in the meeting.
But why weren't, if, if you wanted to start to trust. That action was, just blew us all, all. By the wayside, like, you, you guys had, you had this planned. And we were not aware of, of the, the situation. And, and that does not build trust.
Rebecca, we have trust when this is going on within our schools and they're collaborating against us. And.
But who's collaborating?
Uh, yeah, I don't, this is a lot of, this is a lot of accusations. And I don't think it's proper for this meeting. And I think it's important, Renee, that if you're having these issues, you need to talk to Dr. Morlock. This, this unsubstantiated claims from people we've never heard from, all these accusations. Could be true, they could be completely false. And there's nothing that is brought to the meetings to tell us otherwise. Please follow the channels. If you're hearing from teachers and staff, if you're hearing from people, if you're feeling like you're not being. Safe, please work with Dr. Morlock on that. Don't come to a board meeting and just. Spew it out in generalities that nobody can refute because nobody knows what you're talking about. And it, it's, it's inappropriate.
But it's also inappropriate that, that four of the board members knew about. Uh, the, the hiring of, of a, uh, an outside lawyer. And the rest of us did, weren't aware of it until we were brought with a motion before the executive meeting.
Trevor, you mentioned that you weren't sure if this person was gonna be allowed in, but you still knew. The possibility was there, right? I had no idea who Trey Smith, or it was, who he is. You know, I just found out that he was gonna be representing us as a board. So where's the no surprises?
Is, is that a question or a statement?
When we talk about accountability, we shouldn't just be talking about accountability for the district. Where's the accountability to us? We have an agreement.
Uh, I would, I would submit that that agreement has been violated left, right, and center by. Other members in this body. Uh, and I'm sorry, but it's, it cuts both ways.
Are you sorry though? Are you sorry?
I'm not sorry for what we did tonight. We're allowed to have legal counsel in our meetings.
But you were not, you did not bring it before the whole board ahead of time. We had no idea. What was happening. And that was quite a shock. And, and we had, that, that wasn't. That you, it doesn't build trust, that it makes you, it feel like you're just trying to jam something down our throats. And that does not build trust.
Why didn't anyone tell us? Why didn't anybody reach out to the, the other three board members and say, hey, we're thinking about getting legal counsel?
We already knew that Joe was gonna get counsel.
No, I know, I'm talking specifically about Tyler.
No, I know. Why, what, if you already knew that we, Joe was getting us counsel and you felt that was enough, why didn't you? Ask us or even just let us know, we're thinking about getting somebody else.
Especially if Dave already engaged him. And he's already done seven to ten hours of work for us.
And three hundred dollars an hour? When you didn't even want to consider interpretation for our meetings so that folks could have access. Because it was gonna be costing too much. But we're willing to pay an attorney.
The position was that we should know what we're paying for. Um, beyond that.
We should know what we're paying for. We should know if an attorney is being sought out by the board and decisions are being made, not in a public forum and in a quorum outside of. Public meeting laws. We should know that.
We weren't in a forum. Dave sought out this attorney. He, I, I admit, he probably should have notified you guys as well that he was looking at doing this. He sought out a, an expert in constitutional law. Because those are the issues that our board is dealing with. And we wanted a second set of eyes on these lawsuits that we're facing.
And Joe, did you know that this attorney was gonna be here? Were you asked to have it, the attorney come?
Uh, I was asked and I gave my recommendation that uh, because he is not retained by the district, that he's not. Uh, district counsel and that he would not be allowed in the meeting. And so whatever other actions that you took as a board are separate from that, but um, my uh, so I did not believe that he would be present in the meeting. Because he uh, was not retained by the district. We um, actually have our um, attorneys of record that we passed way back in July. So those were already set. Uh, so, yeah, I would, I expected that he would not be in the meeting. Uh, because we did not have a business meeting tonight. Uh, or um, and we only had executive session and then this board retreat listed.
So Dr. Joe, when you look at like what happened tonight with all of our attorneys speaking, all three of them. Um, isn't it nice though to get, you know, three different perspectives from those guys? You know, as we move forward on a really difficult subject.
You know, I'm not gonna speak about what uh, was in the executive session itself, uh, because that is privileged information. I will say that. Um, that it is important that we follow the um, advice of the attorneys that. Um, our insurance company provides to us because they're the ones that also provide us the coverage. And so that's uh, why we, that's why we brought, that's why I brought. Uh, the attorneys from um, Pace and hired by Pace uh, for us to describe those things because then we are, uh, well. We're within their coverage and if not, then we are outside of their coverage if we don't follow their opinion. So, that's why I uh. That's why we had set up the executive session before.
So do you guys wanna talk about board goals or do you want us to skip that?
I think we would be wasting our time if we attempt to try to set board goals.
Other person on that statement, what would it take for you to set a board goal?
To feel some sort of trust and respect.
Okay, I mean, I, I totally understand that because I spent the first two years feeling just how you, guess you were describing yourself right now. So.
Well, and something that I want on record, I'm, I have been patient about hearing this, you guys. I first, I put on my name on my screen that I, my pronouns are a, yes, she or her. So I don't appreciate how we are generalized as guys. Um, just wanted to have that on record.
I think Brian said it though, the trust factor goes both ways for all of us. So if we can't talk about uh. You know, board goals, because there's something, I mean, again, what's, my question is, what's it gonna take to, to, to present a board goal?
And I think it's gonna take what I suggested of having a open and honest conversation with the outside facilitator with the intent of. Educating each of us, each of us having self-education and also educating each other on. Our feelings, where we're at, our experiences and the lack of trust and the lack of um, respect. And hopefully after that, we can build on that. But I, we have, I, I feel as if we have. Absolutely nothing to build on tonight. So I guess my board goal would be that we have outside facilitated discussion. Not outside of meetings, I'm sorry, an outside facilitator to help us in the discussion.
Uh, had, uh, Brandy, was that done over the last two years when you were chair? It, it sounds like uh. Like Brian um. Maybe, maybe has uh, some of the same feelings that Enya's has um. From the past two years that he, that he was uh, minimized or felt minimized over the last few years and not heard.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Did, did you facilitate that, that kinda thing that you're asking for right now?
Yeah, there were, the two years of my chair position, I can let you know that I spent a considerable amount of time focused on. Team building, on trying to build relationships, on reaching out and. To limited success, obviously. And we had several different board trainings and I think that the. Uh, like I said, I have no doubt and, and I don't wanna diminish Brian's experience or Dave's experience at all. I think what is problematic is that I was a much different leader than Dave is. And I tended to operate a little bit more in line with OSBA guidelines and legal guidelines. And I, I made an effort to try to build those relationships and it didn't work out. And my experience from just the last two meetings has been none of that. Neither, nobody has reached out to me to say, hey, we, we have a strained relationship, let's meet and talk. Nobody has said. You know, I respect you, but I don't agree with you. Like, the, these questions are just completely not even on the plate. It, it's very clear that this is a four-member board. And, and I don't doubt that, that Dave and Brian felt that, having a five-two board. But I think the massive difference here is, is that. I can tell you with a complete honesty that as chair and also with Ron as vice chair, we continually strove to make this a team. And that is not happening at this point. And Brian, it's fine if you have a different take on that. Obviously, we're two different people, but it goes both ways. And the lack of respect and the absolute. Inability to function on a team as a team member has been glaring from the beginning.
Brandy, it just it rings a little hollow when you're out there actively attacking and slandering your fellow board members in the press. So I mean, like that doesn't build trust.
Right, and I have no idea what you're talking about. And if you'd like to have a conversation, I would be totally open to that. But again, don't come with these random false accusations because I have never slandered anyone in the press.
So I had a a goal of encourage excellence and ensure equality of opportunity for all students. I think that would be a good one. Does anyone else have any board goals that they'd like to throw out there before we move on?
Yeah, I I I just think we need to do a better job of engaging students and and teachers and uh parents in the local community. I don't know what that looks like exactly, but uh you know, I I think uh ho- hopefully that's uh that that's a goal that we can all get on board with and and have a discussion on how how we do that. You know, certainly we need a pulse um, you know, of the community, the 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 teachers. And I I keep hearing that, you know, some of the teachers don't feel safe to voice their opinion. They're they're afraid for their jobs. And so that's a bit concerning. I I hear other students say, you know, we we heard a lot over the um that the people who spoke and the people who wrote in that um you know, it sounds like some of the kids aren't aren't safe going to certain teachers and I don't, I wanna understand that more and um hopefully we can get to the bottom of that. But I I think that that only happens if we, you know, have focus groups, you know, and and do Q and A and and truly listen to the the stakeholders.
I have a follow-up question for you. When you say listen to the stakeholders, how would you like to listen? Um because the emails we've gotten, you know, there's so many students, teachers, community members, parents that have spoken and we can go one by one and categorize them if you want. Um people are suffering, we are impacting the education of these students in a negative way, and I'm embarrassed by that.
Well, uh you know, hopefully you looked at all the um the letters that were written in. This is a a very divisive um topic that we're we're trying to tackle here, so.
I did, I did, and the majority want inclusion and want to feel welcome.
Count them up. I'd be happy to count them up.
I would, I would like to to adhere to policy in in the board um section B on at board board um ethics, number thirteen, that we as board members, when we hear complaints from from our constituents, that we advise them to to follow the 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 complaint process and that we don't bring it to the board until it has run its course and this and it's this the the complaint person is is totally unsatisfied with how the principal, the principals administrative, the superintendent, and then only then that it comes to the board. That we that we help educate the um the the public that there is a process and that that also helps gives us accurate data of what the complaint is and how it was dealt or not dealt with. But but to to just take people's um he hearsay and bring it to the board like this is, this is happening all over. I I we make, we we have to have better data to make decisions.
What are you talking about something specific, Rebecca?
Well, like this last um BLM signs and rainbow pride flags. I, my husband and I went to all the all the schools in the last week and I said, how many signs do you have here? What do you have? I did, uh from the letters we were receiving, it sounded like we were flying um pride flags and BLM flags from the flagpole. And that if you go down the hall, there were flags all over the place and that just wasn't the case. And I asked the principals, how many complaints did you have? Did you have official complaints? They didn't have any. And I said, do the t- did the staff come to you? One or two staff did, but it didn't fall into the complaint, but that's but the staff knows they can go to their union representative if they feel fearful of retaliation. But um but to, you know, I think I I I think that this um measure we took got blown out of proportion and and was acted on something that was was not really followed through the complaint process. And that's why we have the complaint processes in our policies. We need to follow policies. That would be an excellent board goal to learn our policies and follow them.
I will say one just quick thing for Renee and Trevor, since you you're new. One of, and it's related to the complaint thing. One of the roles of the school board is to serve as a judiciary body in the case of a complaint procedure. So if a person complains to their principal and they appeal that to the superintendent and they don't like that, they can appeal it to the board. And if as a board member, you have prior knowledge of this complaint, you have to recuse yourself from any judicial hearing. And so it's problematic because if several board members are talking outside of the meeting about these complaints, then quorum could be effective. And also, your ability to serve in your role as a board member in a judiciary capacity is is definitely affected.
And for the record, we've never met as a quorum.
I mean, I'm not following you, so I wouldn't know.
So Brandy, to to piggyback on what your question, what you just said, so uh maybe we're getting off off topic here, but um so if if an individual board member hears about a complaint, they have to re- recuse themselves from 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 listening to a ruling on that complaint if it gets to the board level?
Yeah, so ideally, you know, let's say you're in Fred Myers and a parent walks up to you and says, hey, I don't like that my kid was disciplined in X, Y, or Z way. It it's important to be compassionate, right? As as a an elected official and say, that sounds like a difficult situation. I would encourage you to follow the policies set out in the complaint procedure and start with your school principal. And that's it. That's it. No details, no who was involved, who wasn't, what are the rumors? You just lay it out and say, that sounds like a difficult experience and I encourage you to follow the complaint procedure and starting with the school principal or the teacher, you know, depending on the situation. Does that make?
But at that point that you you know about the complaint, then um you have to recuse yourself?
No.
No, I I think if you could honestly, you know, come to it and say, listen, you know, three months ago, I saw so and so at Fred Myers, they told me that they had were unhappy with this. I encouraged them to, you know, follow the correct plus procedures around complaints. And we did not speak further on it. I don't think you would need to recuse yourself in that situation. However, if they go in to tell you all the details and who was there and what was going on, yeah, that's problematic.
It's more if you
And what governs that?
If you have prejudged the case or you've stated your judgment on the the particular event, then you should but just because you hear about something doesn't mean you have to recuse yourself.
Well, the issue then could be, obviously, if you find out, you know, that what if they don't like what the board decision was? And you know, then there was, well, I talked to Trevor and he knows all about it. Well, Trevor didn't recuse himself. That, I mean, it's problematic. So I'm I I'm just saying, like steer clear of that because one of the roles is as a judiciary body. But it it's not something that we often have to do, so we're not well-practiced sometimes, but it is it's really important to just get into that mindset.
And and are some of these things that um we're talking about, are 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 they in the OSBA training? That um we're talking about pursuing?
I would think so.
Yes, I I would say the role of board members has definitely extensively gone over.
Um uh as we're talking about goals and stuff, I guess, piggybacking what you said, Rebecca, on additional training. I think I would like to to have a training session. I don't know Derek's the person, but um to really go and it it a little bit more in depth in the in the stats, the metrics that uh you guys present and and understand those at a deeper level on how they're um how the data's um, you know, accumulated, how it's processed, so we can, you know, better uh understand it and make make better decisions.
Okay. Anyone have any other board goals that they wanna throw out there before we move on?
All right. Do we want to look at last year's board goals and how and and see how we did? To 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 measure up how, what if we were effective? Because goals are are supposed to be measurable and effective.
Yes. I would like to do that, Rebecca. I think you always have to look at how you did.
Good idea. Does somebody have that on hand? The goals from last year?
Our facilitators, do they have them?
I have it.
That's not Wilson.
That would probably be a good thing to do for a workshop, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, on to item five, board conflict resolution and unity moving forward. So.
So be before we go on, what are we going to do with these these goals that that we we wrote down? Are they gonna be presented in the next board meeting and talked about and and passed or what?
I think we should probably work at them at our next work session. We're we're trying to have uh one of the meetings per month be a business meeting like we've been having and then have the second one be a work session where we have more of the sort of free-ranging conversations and looking at particular topics similar to what we're doing here tonight.
And will these be facilitated by somebody outside of this group?
No.
That's concerning and problematic with our current dynamics.
Do you have suggestions?
Yeah, I I think, like I said, before we go on to goals or attempting any sort of team unity, we need to have serious professional development around this for our board from outside facilitators.
Talk to Steve Kelly and we'll have him part of some board development there coming up.
Can we do that before our next board meeting so we can hopefully work through some of these issues and come together as as more of a team and more united somewhat? Because this is really um gonna be affecting our students once school starts. So we really need to learn how to work together, even with our differences.
It'll wait till a school starts. I think it's already affecting our students.
I I I appreciate the the um direction of the work meeting. It would have been nice if this is what you were thinking, that you presented to the board as such and not just this is how it's gonna be. It that's also um keeping us informed of 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 um direction changes would be nice.
Well, I mean, we've been saying we wanna do work session meetings for two years straight. Uh and the board has agreed on that in the past and we've never made it happen, so we're trying to make it happen this year.
Okay, well, that that's all all I would have appreciated is notification. Like like we're part of the team.
All right, uh any other suggestions for how we can build our relationship up to be a healthier one? We have a facilitated work session that we're talking about doing.
Yeah, I'll I'll get that put together, Brian.
Any other suggestions?
Yeah, I think we need to just focus on uh what we have in common. We obviously have differences and we feel strongly about those, but I I would argue that if we could have a civil conversation and discuss you know, our our commonality, we need to focus on those things, right? And and I think that that common thing is the well-being and and success of our students. What that looks like and how we how it plays out, how we implement things. Um we could differ on on that a bit, but at least if we have that conversation about what unites us. You know, I think that that's that's the common thread, right, that we need to be focusing on.
I I couldn't agree more. Any other discussion on this topic or should we adjourn early?
Not on this topic, but Brian, you mentioned that you were gonna count the emails and categorize them. Um I would appreciate if we would know um which are like in-district emails and which are out-of-district emails. Um so we have a better idea. One good example, we received an email um from Kristen Stoller with the classified signatures of which ones were from Newburgh, which ones were from Dundee. I really appreciated that because the data is clear and I can see where the signatures are coming from and where the comments are coming from. So thank you for that.
And just to be clear, I didn't, I was going to count them up. I said I'd be happy to count them up. In the sense that I'd be happy to have us add those numbers up and see where the community fell. And the one thing that should have been clear to everyone is how divided the community is by these issues.
Well, it's not a fifty-fifty divide.
I think it could be a really good use of time also for the board to try to uh to actually create protocol on how we do hear public comment. Um because we're getting so many public comments and I think it's really important that we prioritize student voice, staff voice, parent voice, community voice. And then if we have time and and bandwidth, then yes, let's hear from everybody who calls in, even if they're from West Virginia or Iowa. But as elected officials to our constituents within the district and Trevor, you hinted at this as well, that as a priority, it is absolutely to elevate student and community voice. And if we're not allotting enough time for public comment, if we're not genuinely following up with people, if we're not saying, yes, we are prioritizing students, staff, parents, and community members. It's very difficult for people to continually show up when they don't even know if they'll have a chance to speak. Um I think that some procedure around that is is critical at this point.
Yeah, I I have two things to say on that. I I would say that this is not a popularity contest. I don't think it's uh productive for us to count up votes on who's on one side and who's on the other. I think the important thing is is that we have a couple different avenues for people in the community to voice their concerns or opinions. in the community to voice their concerns or opinions and stuff like that. That's through email and then they can also call in, right? Obviously, this is a hot button issue. A lot of people signed up to call in. You know, and but we have two two avenues that people can voice their opinion. So if they're not able to get in on the on the the call, they can do that through email and as a lot of people did. So I guess those are my two thoughts. Yes, we want to hear from people, but we also have business, you know, to conduct in the meetings. Dave Brandy, it was my understanding that we don't even have to hear from the public. And I don't think that that's right. Is that is that how the i- is that a true statement?
Yeah, the chair, the chair decides because the chair runs the meeting and and I'll let you know, last summer, when we adopted the anti racist resolution and had quite a bit of community input, we held a special session. We held a special listening session which had no agenda and no business and it was just to listen to people to give them an opportunity to voice their experiences. And it is problematic. I agree with you. We it is very problematic when you start trying to dip your toe into limiting constituent input.
The other thing I would say is I agree with you, Trevor, like it's it's a waste of time if we go by numbers, which is why at the last meeting I said the quality to me is more important than the quantity. And these stories mattered to me. These are students' lives that we're hearing.
You've got to remember though, there's, you know, what I've reading all those emails is the stories from both sides. I mean, for every kid who's, you know, parent hurting on one side, there's somebody, you know, hurting on the other side. I mean, we have to look at it that way. I mean, we don't have the luxury of the school board just to say we're only going to represent you know, part of our community. You know, for for one person who thinks that Black Lives Matter is awesome, another person looks at it and they're offended beyond belief. They have to they have to go home and explain that to their parents who's officer or parents who's a police officer. So I mean, there's there's hurting going on both sides for sure, and and.
I don't disagree and I I would consider that I have a good relationship with the Newburgh Police Department. And I still think Black Lives Matter. Even with my good relationship with the police, because one doesn't mean that I value the other less.
I guess what's hard about that is is the other day, driving by the flagpole at that rally for Black Lives Matter and there's a sign being held by a person right here saying death to cops. And that's that's all over the country, you know, that comes out. So it's like, that's how a lot of people view that though. So they don't see a a nice flag. They don't see a nice, safe sign for somebody to walk into a classroom. They see something violent and very divisive. It hurts them really bad. And so again, I think as a school district, you know, from my take on me, I'm looking at and how do we how do we represent everybody? Especially when we have something that we don't have to have there that does create division, you know, we are divided big time. I mean, we've proven that right.
But Dave, last time we could have done things differently. We could have been, we could have worked collaborative to make a solution for both sides. It didn't have to be get so divisive. And and that's for board goal or for our working, working through conflict resolutions, we have to learn how to step back from our agenda and learn to work collaborative. And how to to meet both sides.
All right.
Oops, sorry, Dave. We need to be there for, I would agree that I think we all would agree that we're, we want to be there for all children and that was none of us are against black children or or children of color. None of us are against the LGBTQ. None of us are against kids that have police officers as families. We are need to be there for all children, not a certain group over another group, but for all of them. Because each and every one of them are hurting in some ways that we don't even know how they're hurting. And a lot of these kids don't have a voice because they're afraid to speak up for being bullied or harassed. Same with teachers and staff members and parents. I mean, and I don't blame them after what we've been going through since our last board meeting. I I really don't blame them for not wanting to speak up. So and I was voted in to be a voice for all, for all students, not just for a certain group or for for all of them that are hurting. And that's why I was voted in. And I will continue to be a voice for every single student, not just a certain group, but for all students. And I want them all to feel safe and welcome.
Renee, I I don't doubt that you are sincere in your in in expressing your your thoughts, but it rings very hollow for me. Because you want, you know, I I fully believe that you have the good intent to support all students and create safe environments, 100%. I'm not questioning that. But in the face of hundreds, thousands of community members saying, don't do this, this hurts me. You're sticking to your guns and I have a really hard time believing what you say because of it. And I think that is why we need some deeper conversations, especially before we start taking motions and changing policies and getting outside legal consults and all of the chaos and distrust that has been like sown in our community, also on this board, obviously, since the actions of August 10th are they will, they will be repercussions for a long time. And and I hope that we have a point where we can right the ship and recognize the dysfunction that we've created and build towards better. But it's not going to be and continued, it's not going to be on the path that we're currently on.
I would add to that too, Brandy, that, you know, everybody in this board should have half the heart that Renee Powell has for kids and I've seen it for a lifetime.
And I, Dave, that's out of order.
I really wasn't done. I wasn't done. I wasn't done.
That's out of order to 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 say that we don't have hearts like Renee.
Members will appeal points of order to the chair.
Points of order chair.
State your point of order.
That he was trying to compare the other board members to Renee and that's not his position. That's not proper.
Interpret his comments as anything other than a compliment on how big Renee's heart is. I don't think he was disparaging the other members.
Well.
Dave, are you finished?
I was going to say, we have, you know, there's a big disconnect here tonight where people want to say they have it figured out or they care about people a great deal. And yet you don't listen to everybody. And I know going through all those comments and emails, people calling in that, yes, there was a lot of people that were upset with our vote. There were a lot of people extremely happy with our vote. There are people on both sides of this. If nothing else, this board should at least look at this and go our community is so divided and why? Why are we so divided? Why are we so divided?
Because we took an incredibly divisive action as a board. I I think that's fairly obvious.
This this started way back. This started clear back with the the anti racism resolution clear back that we've been in trouble ever since then. We've had people all over the community upset with with that that vote. Even though it passed six to one on the border later, five to two, there's people over this community that didn't like that vote. And then we've been in a in a political free fall this entire year, United States of America, including Newburgh, Oregon.
I think one of my points of frustration, Brandy, is that, you know, for two years I heard that the board speaks with one voice and that we don't go after the board has made a decision and undermine that decision in the community. And I don't feel like that is being followed by the the people who in the side that have lost this the vote on this issue. That is not being honored in any way, shape or form. And I mean, you can look at this conversation tonight if you want evidence of that. We're relitigating, signed the board already voted on. And I don't see in your statement, anything other than if you want unity, agree with me.
No, I I absolutely don't. In fact, I really enjoyed serving with Ron Mock because he and I did disagree and he pushed me and I pushed him and it was robust academic, intelligent conversation that that was very beneficial for me and I hope for him too. I I actually, it's not the disagreement part. It is the, I I will not, as an elected official, ever stand behind illegal action, discriminatory action, or things that will financially harm the district in yet to be even be determined ways. I won't, I won't do it. And so I totally agree with you and it is it is a to grow into that, to be able to say, gosh, this did not go my way, but I am a part of a board and and I am going to put in my big girl pants and keep working with this because we're a team. What happened on the 10th is completely outside of those bounds and and I'm not going to bend my moral and ethical person who I am, my character, because four people chose to do things that are discriminatory and illegal. And I know that's frustrating. That's a big bone of contention for this board.
You keep calling us four people. I call us the majority. The majority voted. And, you know, you were just five people in the last two sessions and I never heard you say the five people. So have a little respect for for rule of the majority. You lost an election. Things aren't necessarily going your way on all the issues now. Like, deal with it.
Oh, oh, Brian, I am. I'm I'm fully capable of working with people I don't agree with. And this again is not an issue of not agreeing with somebody. This is an issue of disrespect and lack of trust and illegal actions and discriminatory practices. And that's a problem. And there's no way we're going to function again as a board, as an organization at a higher level until we can gut these things out and come to some kind of agreement. And so we can keep talking until 10 o'clock. I don't have a lot of faith that it's actually going to result in anything positive.
Brian, what did you have? How were you going to facilitate conflict resolution?
Well, I think having a conversation about where we're at and being honest with each other is the first step. But also I didn't set this agenda. I'm filling in at the last moment here.
With that, then, Dave, how would you facilitate this conversation around conflict?
Well, I mean, I did a lot of this at Newburgh High School. We're talking more like high school, you know, age, you know, not adults. But I think that, you know, we had a complete, you know, process that we had in place at Newburgh High School. And a lot of it dealt with just the relationships. Moving forward, how we could have students be in the same classroom and not be disruptive to the the teacher or the other students. And I guess my thing, how I would facilitate this is moving forward, I'll 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 talk to Steve Kelly about this very issue. But I would also say not to be just be dumping it on him how I would, I would say each of us should look at this moving forward is you know, whenever I'd walk into a conflict resolution, you know, the emotions are high, the anger was definitely there. It could have been for lots of different reasons. And so the first process was to, you know, go through questions, get everybody kind of calming down. And and then once we got everybody kind of in a point where they could listen, that was kind of the key point of the resolution was it's just to get people to listen, not always easy for high school kids to do. Then it was pretty surprising, you know, how they would respond to some positive, you know, listening things and generally, when they heard the other person, you know, they're like, okay, I don't agree with you, but I understand your point of view. So I guess and as that's how I would moving forward, I'll talk to Steve how I'd like to see us move forward is. And going back to what Rebecca said just a minute ago, Rebecca, I'll try to do better as far as communicating with you on that kind of stuff. It's been an interesting stretch of life here, but no excuses. I would, I would just like to see us be able to you know, have that 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 conversation and try to keep the anger and emotions out of it and go, okay. All right. You know, I listened to what you had to say and I still don't agree with you. And I mean, it might take us a while, you guys. I mean, it might take us, you know, several months to to get to where we feel like we can come into a meeting and be listening to each other and and feel heard, you know? And as I I get that one totally, you know, like 20 years we're going to do high school or a lot of times I didn't feel heard and it's frustrating. I've heard you say that many times. And that's something I think that would be a really good center point for us. Moving forward is that we all get a chance to feel heard and you know, maybe we can if we can stay calm and listen, we might be able to to actually learn a little bit more about where the other person's coming from, their heart and their situation. So I think that's kind of, I got to be the first step in this. That's what I would say about conflict resolution. The one thing I thought was really effective at Newburgh High School is we did not walk into the meeting and just rain a gavel on the table and say, you're wrong. You know, we tried to tried to really keep it positive. And then sometimes that would flow into a teacher. We had to take those students into a prep period for a teacher and say, okay, look, you know, you need to we got a few things we got to talk about with your your teacher here moving forward also. And those ended up being pretty fun because a lot of times, you know, we could get to a point where everybody was listening. So I think moving forward, that's where we need to go to. And then it's it's okay. There's, you know, one thing I've seen about the personalities on the school board is everybody's tough and feisty and and strong willed. And that's that's not a bad thing at all. So I would just, as we kind of close up shop tonight, you know, I think we ought to come to that next meeting and and I'm going to really try to just be a better communicator and and listen to what you guys all have to say. And, you know, I'll say what I have to say and if we disagree or we vote differently, that that that'll happen. But I think that basic respect of you know, where we're coming from, I I would say, and as with you, it's like you know, I know you've been to school. I know we've both been there. It's, you know, same time. I know there there's a lot of lot of deep feelings. I know you have them. I know I have them. And I think let's just try to work together to make those the best we can for our kids at the school and all this craziness of the adult personality and the board and stuff. I mean, maybe we can try to categorize it and 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 really help kids out this 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 school year. That's what I would like to see happen.
All right. Does anyone else have anything they want to say?
Well, I must say that Steve Kelly said it right, that we are all on the board to serve our students, our staff and our community members. And on that, I can, I can show respect for that. But that we do all want the best and how we as adults model for our students, how to get along with one another and how to collaborate. You know, Steve kept talking about collaborative governance. We need to do do it ourselves. And I'm willing to 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 do the work.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Wilson. Anyone else? Joe, do you want to maybe close this out here?
Well, there's a lot of work to do. You as a board and we together as a team. And I think that that's, I don't mean it to sound Uh, well, there's a lot of work to do. Uh, you as a board and we together as a team, and I think that that's uh, I don't mean it to sound uh as an understatement, but I think we do have a lot of work to do. We are going into what is effectively the third uh school year affected by a global pandemic. We have um uh teachers and staff and administrators who are working exceptionally hard well before the bell to get this going. You know, busing and lunches and getting kids in and getting all the school supplies that we said we would order, get them all done and organized and and teachers getting ready for their classrooms and secretaries coming in to clean up the mess from them with their principals left behind. And so I I I want us to, as you, as a board, and we as a leadership team, to start to really focus on school stuff. We have stuff to talk about. But you also can't focus on those things if you're not gonna operate well together. So I I do, I think an outside facilitator is a great idea. Um, honestly, because that will help let that person kind of manage the conversation. Um, and back to one comment that was made earlier about um about public comments, and I think we, I think that's something that the the board should tackle as a as a way to make it uh that allows staff to be able to prepare for those board meetings and allow also people to have expectations of whether they'll be heard or not be heard. Um, that that's important for them to to know what those rules are. But uh, you know, we've got, we have work to do, and I know that it's um, there's a lot of emotion in the room. Um, I hoping that we can um turn our focus to getting school open and getting kids in the door and um, you know, all the things that we're really uh excited about is happening within just a few weeks. You know, we are counting down the hours every single day, so it's important for us to to turn our focus to those things and uh and continue to work through. I appreciated having Steve Kelly here tonight. And I could look forward to having him do some other ones for some other workshops. If we want to look at that, I think that would really um, kind of help coalesce around what the goals are for a school board and the school district together. So uh, thanks. I know it was hard for lots of folks, but uh appreciate you guys sticking that a little bit and getting through those things and uh and having some harder conversations tonight. With that, I think uh Chair Shan, or at least Vice Chair, but Chair in spirit today as you're running the show, right? Okay, Vice Chair, but I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Hey, Brian? Uh, I know we called on Joe, but does Derek have anything to say? He's been sitting there patiently and
I appreciate you all uh being here. I appreciate being able to listen to the conversation and sharing your truths. I think that's really important. Um, and I I would go back to Steve's comments again about how important it is for the board to work well together, to work well with Joe. Um, and that's really central to our ability to be able to deliver great learning experiences for all our kids. So uh appreciate you all digging in, and I know this is just the start of lots of our conversations, but the commitment to move forward and continue having those uh will benefit everybody. So thank you for that.
I have a question, Joe. Um, is there a way that we can help um the staff and teachers get ready for school to help um lessen the load or um is there something that we can do to participate in that and then kind of build that relationship as well with them?
Um, you know, maybe we'll find a way that that uh you can help celebrate the their them coming into the school. I know that they get really focused on the stuff they're doing. Um, but uh, I'll I'll do some questioning around our principals, too, and see what else we can, we get you involved with, but um, you know, they'll start coming in. We actually have our new uh teachers coming in and new staff coming in at the end of this week, so in two days. Today's Tuesday, right? Yeah, so on Thursday, uh and then the following week, you know, all staff are in, and so it's it's a pretty crazy time right now, but yeah, I'll look for some opportunities for you to be able to support them or at least cheer them up or get them ready to go. They're all lamenting the final, final end of summer, so.
Awesome. Great question. All right, with that, uh I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight.
Thanks.